Up jerks, how you doing today? Tonight? I just wanted to kick it off tonight. We got a Canton Select Board meeting tonight, public comment. Been thinking about going back to Canton. Like I said, we're gonna go back to Canton over and over again. Cause that's what we've been doing for the last couple of years. If you haven't noticed, tonight, we're gonna go back. We're gonna go back and this is gonna be like a new series, just going back to our old videos, replaying everything that's happened in Canton over the last couple of years. Tonight, live Select Board meeting at 7:00 PM, we'll be covering that. But right now, we're just gonna start playing some old videos. I wanna watch the old Canton Select Board, public comment. Some of you have seen them in the past, some of you haven't. Let's just kick it off. This is going back to 2023. So this was two years ago, 12/19/2023.
Identify yourself with your address.
Sean Colburn, 89 Randolph Terrace. I would like to thank all the 903 citizen of Canton who voted yes on Article 6 of the independent audit of the police and select board. With the recent statements on December 5th by the United States Attorney's Office in Massachusetts, that they are in fact investigating the investigation into the John O'Keefe murder case. This investigation, I'm sure, will include the Canton Police Department and its mishandling of this case, the Sandra Birchmore case in February of 2021, the Craig Casey case in December of 2018. An independent audit was not supported by this select board or by the Chief of Police. Why? This audit will ensure that the taxpayers of Canton are being represented by a capable, transparent group of professionals. This select board sat idle when four women, who I have become friends with, received threatening letters in the mail a few months ago, trying to silence them from speaking out at select board meetings. Not one of you, not one of you spoke out against us. Your silence basically condoned these letters. Did you not feel that this needed to be addressed? I saw empathy from most of you when you had to reject the residents' request to shut down a street on Halloween. Shame on all of you, shame on you. My opinion on why the citizens voted yes on this audit, because they don't have faith in the select board or the police chief, to be an independent, unbiased, professional group of leaders who will represent the best interests of this community. You have all failed. When you hear news media making statements like "a town in turmoil," "a small town at war and divided," just know that all of you sitting there would give an ample opportunity to stop the disruptive path the town was heading down. You did nothing. We asked for a crisis management team. It fell on idle ears. Just know that the demographic of Canton is changing for the better. Your constituents are changing for the better. The vote on November 20th proved that. And just let you know, we are all here, we're not going away. The people at home are watching. And come this spring, we're hoping to unseat you one by one. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
See, as this man get up here and decide to blast you all, I just wanted to say that he doesn't speak for the majority of Canton. He speaks for the minority.
It's his mic.
He speaks for the minority, the lunatic fringe.
Again, sir, I'm gonna ask you, it's his turn to speak. Go ahead.
He speaks for the minority. He speaks for the lunatic fringe that wants to divide this town as a smokescreen for Karen Reed and Turtle Boy. I was gonna come up here and speak about Rita Lombardi's favorite topic, which is Rita Lombardi, but she's not here anymore. But I just wanna say, I support you, I support the police department, the majority of Canton does. The only reason why that amendment passed at the special town meeting is that they organized a good campaign to get their people there. That doesn't speak to the majority of Canton, that speaks to the majority that was in that building that night. This whole degeneration of the select board and the Canton Police Department is ridiculous. It's a smokescreen to try and blow past the Karen Reed trial and the little Turtle Boy trial. And it's just ridiculous, and I've had enough.
Thank you.
Little bug, little bug Jim Ferris.
Time.
That's your key to go.
Chris Boyd in 26 Farm Street. This will be so short, cause I was gonna talk about other cases like Craig Casey and Sandra Birchmore. I don't have anything against the select board. I just wanna say, I want to talk about two issues. One, one of the complaints at that special town meeting was the cost of the independent audit and an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. The, it's $200,000 and we spent far more on the low plato case when we settled. So there's that. And then the other thing was, just from a reassurance standpoint, I may have already, I feel like I said this before, but I don't know. The independent audit will look at how the Canton Police handles cases, will find nothing, hopefully. It'll provide everyone in the town with a peace of mind or not, in which cases improvements will be made. Canton residents fund the police and we need to be assured that everything's okay or that the needed improvements will be made. That's all. So I don't, I don't know why there is, I don't know, this, I don't know why there's no, I don't know why there's a negative feeling about it. But anyway, it wasn't just about the Karen Reed case and it's not just about Turtle Boy. That's all I wanna say. But thanks so much.
Kathleen Howley, 43 Sherman Avenue. I'm rising to ask our select board to stop the reckless behavior that is exposing the town to lawsuits that will be a heavy burden on the taxpayers. I'm speaking, of course, about the police department's extremist and never-before-used interpretation of a law, twisting it to say it does something no town and no city in Massachusetts has ever.
Wait, so Kathleen warned them, warned them about the lawsuits that it looked like, looks like it's coming. Karen Reed has hinted about that. Canton is gonna get sued in her legal filing. So back in 2023, Kathleen Howley, here she was, warning them of what was to come.
I said it does. Take away the rights of citizens to peacefully protest their elected officials. As you may know, there was a protest to protect the First Amendment rights held in front of the police station on Sunday that had over 200 people holding signs peacefully using the rights granted to them by the Constitution. There's probably no building in town that has more witnesses to the case, as it's called, specifically, the investigation into the murder of Boston Police Officer John O'Keefe. The officers who were first responders all worked there, yet citizens were allowed to protest in front of a station filled with witnesses. What's the difference between the witnesses and the police station and Chris Albert? The police told the organizers of the protest, and I commend them for saying this, that they are not afraid of people who are standing there peacefully holding signs. But Chris Albert, who chose to run for election without telling voters he had over a dozen tax liens, over a dozen lawsuits for not paying his bills and that he had gone to jail, he didn't tell us any of that. He is afraid of people holding signs. He is so afraid that he summoned the police, who now have charged the peaceful protesters with felony crimes. Mr. Albert oversees the police and his position on the select board. If that's not an abuse of power, I don't know what is. The first of the 10 people went in front of a clerk magistrate yesterday. The magistrate dismissed the charges, for all the charges, finding there was no probable cause. And as you know, probable cause is a very, very low bar, and it didn't even meet that. I hear this phrase from some of our leaders, and you probably have heard it too, "let the courts work it out." When you hear that, understand that it means, "let the taxpayers pay for that." The peaceful citizens who were prevented from protesting have filed a federal lawsuit against the police in the town, a case that is ongoing. The taxpayers were appalled that, for the first time in its history, the Canton Police are taking this action. We are the ones.
No, you got time. I love stop the clock.
Oh, that's okay. Yeah, it was under three minutes. So the taxpayers are appalled that, for the first time in history, the Canton Police are taking this action. We are the ones who will pay for it. The police officers and you on the select board who oversee the police, that's your job, and the police chief works under your quote "day-to-day supervision per her contract." The taxpayers will be funding the best legal representation available to defend all of the town workers. We are appalled at your disdain for the Constitution, yet we are getting you lawyers we probably couldn't afford for ourselves, named partners in fancy Boston law firms. The police chief's contract says she works under the day-to-day direct supervision of the select board. It's time for you to start supervising, do the job we elected you to do. Stop the reckless behavior that will result in more lawsuits, higher legal bills, and even more in payouts for these actions that anyone with a high school education can clearly see are unconstitutional. Thank you.
Good evening. I have a question for the board.
Identify yourself, please.
Jennifer O'Donnell. I have a question for the board.
No questions.
Is it obvious that you backed the wrong horse yet? I have purposely not brought up the Karen Reed case to the select board meetings outside of speaking in memory of John O'Keefe. And I want, I won't pretend to know what happened that awful night. However, what is very clear is it wasn't Karen Reed. I'm not sure if you have been following, but the last hearing, we all got to watch Chris walk in behind a woman who gladly used her body to entrap a journalist for reporting too effectively. A human shield, smiling smugly, feeling so smart, while it's backfiring. Good smile, Chris. Chris has shown us how low he's willing to go. I believe the court was told she is family. Chris has taken to using people as collateral now, bending and twisting the laws and rules to his own needs. Chris Albert, you and the Commonwealth brought the circus to our town. You and your bad judgment call after bad judgment call are the reason so many keep showing up. It's that simple. You are the sideshow. You claim to be a scared witness. You're not scared, Chris. This is a game to you. Don't know what happened that night, but we do know what's happened ever since. And you continue to abuse the seat that you sit in and use your resource, our resources, as a town and a state for your personal protection, including using us as your human shield. You weren't scared when you singled me out at the courthouse, Chris. I stood in silence, exercising my First Amendment, holding this sign here. It's been the same sign that I've held ever since September. Would I be using, you asked me, as you cocked your little head, would you be using this as your school committee campaign? No, Chris, because until you singled me out, I was able to keep these two completely separate. I have this sign from the start. We have Meatball Morrissey and Corrupt Proctor, infamous solo cups in a killer playlist. Nothing scary, nothing bullying, nothing about you, nothing about anyone else in this town. No mention of the McAlberts. You have used trashy people in court as a shield, and you have used our town as a shield long enough. You and my, and the entire family and social circle are involved in this case to making, to involve, to be making any sound judgments on behalf of our town. You should take the time to focus at home.
You should be embarrassed of yourself. You should be embarrassed of yourself, embarrassed. It's unbelievable. Did you hear that? Chris Albert, "you should be embarrassed of yourself." He's the guy who didn't pay his taxes and killed a person. Motor vehicle homicide, left the scene and didn't tell voters when he was, when he was going for election. That's embarrassing, Chris Albert. That's embarrassing. You couldn't even be honest when you were looking for your neighbor's votes in your own town. You didn't tell people who, what you really were about, did you? That's embarrassing. Funny, 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 funny guy.
We're gonna stop the clapping, we're gonna get on to the next one, or we're gonna stop this thing right now. Okay, next.
Yeah, that was Chris Albert. That was, that was confirmed. There's another video we can play maybe another time where you, it's right on Chris, one of the participants, I think it was Mazza maybe, I'm not sure. Somebody took a video directly of Chris that day. So there's another version of it out there too, that we have on our YouTube, but that is definitely, that was Chris Albert. That was Chris Albert, who said she should be embarrassed. He's the guy who didn't tell voters that he killed a man. He's, he's the guy who didn't tell voters that he had unpaid bills and that he didn't pay his taxes and he had a bunch of lawsuits against him. He wasn't truthful about any of his past. Be one thing if he said, you know, "I've, I've suffered from financial difficulties, I understand how difficult it can be." It's, it's, you know, and I'm, I'm, you know, I'm doing a redemption arc here. I killed a man in my, you know, when I was younger, but I've learned from that. If he had done that, that would be different. But he didn't do that. Harrison.
Go ahead, next.
Kristen Anderson. Good evening. As members of the board, you work for me, a random citizen. One of my expectations is to conduct yourself in a professional manner, especially when out in public. You are representing this town. However, attending a high-profile murder case, swearing at bystanders, and making derogatory comments to other random citizens that are currently running for specific seats within the town, well, that is extremely inappropriate and unacceptable and should not be tolerated. I know I do not tolerate it. With that being said, what part of "dude, you gotta go" do you not understand? Thank you, and have a good evening.
Paul McAuliffe. Over the past several weeks and months, we've been lectured on things like decency, integrity, transparency, accountability, and leadership with profanity-laced rhetoric by an individual running for a school committee position. I'll start by acknowledging that when Mrs. Schuman was here and read the letter in front of the board, it was obvious that it had its intended effect. She was upset and shaking. You don't have a heart if you didn't feel for her. The, the origin of the letter was never actually determined, but nobody questioned its impact on Ms. Schuman, and I think we can all agree that nobody should ever be made to feel that way. That being said, about two months ago, I myself received a communication from the individual in the running for school committee reading the following. "Do you really want me to focus on you? Do you really want me to dig and find out your connection to the corruption? I've never done a thing to you," or, she names a citizen who I have no personal affiliation with. "This is my only suggestion," and I said the same to this unnamed citizen, "pretend I don't exist," or "prepare," misspelled, "for me to fight back. I'm not fighting any one individual, I'm fighting to make a less toxic environment for all of our children. Why are yours and private? That's what I've been told. We have such great schools, who's paying for the private school? I haven't wasted my time looking into you, but maybe it's time." Unlike the letter Ms. Schuman received, this, this message had a timestamp, date stamp, name, and photo attached. What I have to say to this person is, go ahead and dig whatever the hell that means. I can tell you what you'll find. You'll find me probably laughing at something inappropriate or making a comment on social media that's maybe unpopular in your circle. You know what that means? It means I have a personality and that I'm flawed, just like you, just like every other person in this room and in town, everyone. And even though I'm nothing special, maybe you'll just ruin me forever. Wouldn't that be wonderful? Good for you, but in the meantime, while you try and dredge up something damning that'll cripple my reputation, I encourage you to take your own advice and instead pretend I don't exist. Don't talk about my kids anymore, ever. And don't threaten me. In fact, maybe rethink your entire approach on how you address people that think differently than you, especially if you're trying to secure their vote to help oversee the development of our children.
This way. Thank you, thank you, sir. I am not gonna allow any confrontation, I am not gonna allow any confrontations. Thank you.
Let me just say, these clowns on the select board. There's a rule that you don't attack people in attendance who aren't on this, you're not even supposed to do that about select board members, or city council. I've been to so many city councils and select board meetings in the past and spoken at them. And usually, almost every city in town has a rule that you're not gonna, you don't personally go after people who are in the room. You don't sit there and attack them, especially, they're not elected. She, he, he's reading this letter the whole time, and then they, then they say something. When he's done, that's when they say something, these clowns. That's why you're not on the board anymore, Tom. This is why you're not on the select board anymore, Tom. This is a perfect example. You let this guy go on and on and on, attacking the woman he's staring at. Wild, 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 wild. Let's continue.
I'm gonna ask you to please, I'm gonna have you, please take a seat.
Mark Grossman. Menno Zav.
And this one, this is the last one?
Yep.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Gross.
We're, just first of all, everyone's respectful when you speak and you're not, you know, you're not the same, that was rude.
This way, this way.
He, he was still in her face too. I mean, that, that was just ridiculous. That's ridiculous. A man in a woman's face, like this is, this is what they're up against. This is what the citizens of Canton were up against. Let's keep playing.
I find it deplorable and utterly unfair for individuals who think they know the facts to issue a blanket denunciation of the town's police force, all of whom are decent, hard-working, respectful officers. To insinuate these officers are corrupt, officers that have grown up here and have families here would risk their pension, everything they've worked for in their career is insulting. I've grown up with numerous of them and know them and their families personally, and to question their character is wrong. We are fortunate to have a great police department. I just wanna say to the people that are here, that from out of town, I mean, there's really no, there's no, I mean.
This way.
I feel like there's no place for these people that don't live in Canton here for one reason.
Look at this clown, look at this clown. He wants to tell people in America, "you don't have a right in my town." And the guy standing behind him that he just pointed at is a Canton High School graduate, grew up in Canton. I mean, should we check your papers, dude? I have no idea who this dude is. He's definitely a back-to-blue friend of the police, maybe a police officer himself, but Jesus Christ, dude, you wanna check people's papers? Has your family been in Canton as long as John Como's, Como family has been there? You know? It's unbelievable. These clowns. Uh, no, this is not, somebody asked, is this tonight? There, there is gonna be a live, thank you for asking, Lisa. There will be a live hearing coming up tonight at 7:00 PM, we'll be broadcasting it with a new stream, we'll redirect you if you're on YouTube, but there'll be a new stream at 7:00 PM with the Canton Select Board, tonight, definitely. Uh, this is, this is just a series that we're gonna start doing. We're gonna start going back into the archives and playing all these public comments, cause I got three years of them. And so much has happened and so much we forget about, so we're just gonna watch it. We're just gonna go back in time and just watch all this good drama from the past. And remember how much these Canton people have given. Yeah, John was born and raised, imagine that, this, this dude telling him, "you're not Canton enough for us, you don't live here anymore." What a piece of shit. You're a piece of shit, dude. What a piece of trash.
And to cause problems, they don't care for the better of the town, uh, causing a mockery, and I think anyone that associates.
Yeah, you know what, dude? How much money did you raise for Canton in the last couple of years? I don't think you raised as much for the kids in Canton like John Como has. You know what I'm saying? So how dare you, you piece of crap? This is what I'm talking about. All these clowns do, all these McAlberts do, is they get up there and they attack people. They're not even speaking to anything that's going on in the town, uh, in terms of what's in front of the Canton Select Board. Alls they're doing is attacking other citizens that are standing right next to them. What a bunch of clowns. This is why the McAlberts, you lost. This is why you lost on the audit. This is why you've lost every campaign since. This is why Chris Albert, if he decides to run for reelection in April, will lose again. It'll be another loss for you McAlberts, no matter who you put up. This is why. This is why. When you see women and children being bullied, you, you do it in public. You do it in public, dude. Who the F of you? How dare you?
Themselves. I mean, with them, I mean, these people like find a hobby, like, or go to your own town. I don't know why you're here.
These people. These people. What about you, dude? What about you? Who are you speaking for?
Okay, that's it, that's it. Enough. I'm gonna ask you to sit down, or I'm gonna ask you to leave. I'm gonna ask you to sit down or leave, but do not make a comment.
We have people coming here, I don't have glasses, dressed up as a clown. I mean, it's ridiculous that, you know, I just feel like this is, we should be concentrated, there's enough going on in Canton, and, um, and we should focus on the issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
But that hasn't been 15 minutes.
15 minutes.
It hasn't been 15 minutes.
15 minutes, three minutes apiece. We have a motion to adjourn.
The clock, there was still, there was still six minutes left.
Second. Motion to adjourn. Second.
Come on.
Second.
The buzzer only went, the buzzer went up twice, how is that possible? It doesn't say five speakers, it says 15 minutes. You guys not understand that? Don't think that people don't see what the hell's going on here.
All them people, nigger, tell you're gonna be shot in the head, it's a shame of yourself. This is getting harder.
Oh my God.
Attached to this, I certainly understand the pressure that that can put on a speaker. As we've mentioned before, we have many money, many other avenues for residents to reach out to us. We have the open office hours that are unlimited, people can talk. The, the problem is, if the public comment is civil and, um, you know, non-screaming, but if there are members of the audience that are just screaming at, you know, members of the select board over and over, there has to be a limit to that. We can't just allow that for 20 minutes.
Right. And I would like to say that that time limit and the fact that we don't really think you're listening to us, because some of you's take off your mic and then you, it's like, okay, three minutes left, ding, next person, that contributes to the anxiety that's in this room. So if you can help us lower the anxiety, we can help by not responding accordingly.
All right. In addition, please don't speak unless you've been asked to, all right? Trying to keep it organized. All right, Ms. Smith?
Christine Smith, 50, Cockersmith Way. Um, I just wanted to comment on the, the public comment. I, I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other, beginning or end of the meeting, whatever, whatever suits the board. I do think there should be some time limit, otherwise you can have someone come up here and talk for 20 minutes straight and other members of the public don't get an opportunity to speak. That's my only comment.
All right, so, uh, let's, let's see how, let's see how it goes tonight. All right? So hold, hold on.
I thought we were gonna figure out, I think, now based on the fact that it's gonna be longer, maybe it is at the end of the meeting and we do the 20 minutes.
So yeah.
25. Well, we don't want to 25, I mean, I don't care, like 20, 25 at this point, we're here all night.
Let's, let's attempt a 20 minute. All right, so, did you have a comment about what we've already discussed, or are you about to go into public comment?
I just have one question before. Do you guys have anything planned on the agenda about talking about the reappointment of the police chief within the next month or so? Her contract is up on June 30th. Is that something that you guys are gonna discuss in an executive session, or will the community have some chance to voice their concerns on the reappointment of Chief Rafferty?
So typically that is done, contract negotiations are done in executive session, and then when the contract is finalized, it's done so in a public meeting. If the public has input, they could certainly email the select board with that input, but it would not be something that we would, um, open to the public for contract negotiations.
Not contract negotiations, about concerns of something on an agenda item on her reappointment, there would be no. There would be no input from the community.
So the Select Board hasn't decided, uh, we, we haven't yet, um, engaged in those conversations. We're waiting to get through town meeting. So I, I suspect that the Select Board will start to have those conversations.
So those conversations will happen in an executive session? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
So there'll be, even if I made an, um, a motion for an, um, an agenda item, it would not be allowed?
Correct. Contract negotiations are done in executive session.
That's a loophole to kind of cover like salary negotiations, not public safety negotiations, where we don't feel our current chief is in our best interest. That's completely different than what you're covering under your loopholes. So let's make sure that we're not trying to, like, pull the fleece over everyone's eyes.
Okay.
But you can certainly comment about how you feel.
Yeah.
Yeah, that should be a public comment. And a public agenda item before you go into private negotiations for a raise and a new car and what her vacation time would potentially be. Two different things.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I would just like to say one more thing on that topic, okay? I don't think you guys need the community to tell you what we all see. Anyone watching this trial can see the performance of the police department, can see the performance of the high-ranking police officers who have deviated from policies and procedures. And I'm just gonna say this.
And Ms. Labadi, we can't comment on the case.
I'm not asking you to comment on the case. Uh, what I'm saying is, people can send emails to you to express their concern about the leadership that our police department has had. And unfortunately for our town, the whole world can see the performance of our police department. So I'm hoping that you can take what everyone else can see and ma, and include that in your decision-making. If the board comes back and re, you know, renegotiates the contract and continues with the chief, then you will see probably public outcry based on the performance that has been under oath on, in testimony. So it's not my opinion or anybody else's opinion. It's anyone listening to the trial is witnessing that. So I just hope, and we all hope, that you guys take into consideration what everyone else is seeing. And that's what we're asking.
Okay.
Uh, Brenda Sweeney, um,
So, well, hold on a second because,
Yeah, we gotta get on track.
Even, we haven't officially started our public comment, even though we've started our public comment.
It's about the police chief. You have to give her 30 days' notice if you're not gonna renew her contract, and that's two days away. But you're telling us you haven't made it?
Yes. By contrast, you have to give her 30 days' notice.
Otherwise, you give her a golden tariff. So if you're gonna give her a golden pension, we're gonna close up.
Your, your audience is educated. Treat us as such.
Thank you, Ms. O'Donnell. All right.
Okay, Mike, a public comment?
Here we go.
With, uh, with that being said, I, I'd like to take, um, a few minutes just to, um, convey my thoughts and a lot of the thoughts of this community that, um, a lot of people are sitting at home wa, watching this on TV and they don't show up to the Select Board meetings for fear of speaking out against the police department. And, um, I would just like to state that, um, Helena Rafferty was the acting chief on January 29th of 2022. She never showed up on the scene at 34 Fairview or at the Canton Police Department that day, and I ask why. Lieutenant Kelleher oversaw the detective unit of the Canton Police Department. He also lives across the street from 34 Fairview. He never showed up on the scene or even came out of his house. Can you imagine this? Officer Lank and Chief Berkowitz were not even scheduled to work that day, but yet they inserted themselves into this investigation. By the way, Chief Berkowitz was on medical leave on January 29th, 2022. So who was calling the shots that day? A Boston police officer was dead on the lawn of another Boston police officer's house. And we learned from testimony that one of the officers stated that there was no probable cause to search 34 Fairview. There was a missing shoe, a missing hat, no jacket on the victim. If that was any one of our homes, the circumstances would have been different. Through testimony, we've learned that there is a malignancy in our police department. There is a lack of professionalism, a lack of following proper policies and procedures, a lack of judgment, a lack of taking clear and concise police reports, a lack of the importance of interviewing and separating witnesses, and a very obvious lack of memory in preserving a crime scene, a lack of evidence collection. When going off topic about flock cameras at the August 8th, 2023 Select Board meeting, Helena Rafferty made statements that will be preserved forever, as she stated in quote, "I will always be able to look at the O'Keefe family and tell them there is no evidence of a cover-up." This is not faring well in Week Five of this trial. Helena Rafferty inherited a very flawed and humiliating set of circumstances. But the chief has had ample opportunity to express to this community that she was doing everything in her role as a leader to be transparent, to assure the residents of Canton that this tragedy was being processed with the proficiency it deserved. This is what leaders do. The chief has never once made a public statement to this community. The chief never addressed the public outcry over shoddy police work. She agreed to meet one-on-one with residents. We asked the Select Board to have you arrange a public meeting with her to hear our concerns, and you declined. The Select Board also failed to hold her accountable. We asked the town to hire a crisis manager. Nothing was done. This is not leadership. I asked this Select Board, while meeting in executive session over the next few weeks, over the contract of offering current police chief Helena Rafferty a new three-year contract. Ask yourself, does she possess the skills, the leadership, the fortitude to deal with the consequences of the, of this investigation? Like the old saying goes, don't throw the baby out because the bathware, the bathwater is dirty. The bathwater is dirty and the current chief is the baby. It's time for change. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. O'Donnell?
Jennifer O'Donnell. Parody of public figures ruled constitutional. In 1988, the U.S. Supreme Court ruled parody of public figures constitutional. In Hustler Magazine versus Falwell, and the U.S. Supreme Court applies the actual malice standards, saying the First Amendment protects the right to parody public figures, even if the parodies are outrageous or inflict severe emotional distress. Last November, a man in our community made gun gestures with his hands at me in a crowded auditorium, just feet from our chief of police, and rose away from our Select Board. I have a history with this individual, and his actions broke federal law. I asked for the video and have still, to this day, not been allowed to view it or have a copy. The chief's words, I watched it. It was a joke amongst friends. I did not ask her for what her perception was. I know how I felt shaking a room full of cops with not an action taken, even after I made the whole room aware of the moment. I was told you need three situations, and then you go to Stoughton District Court to get yourself a restraining order. Then you call 911. Now our cops can do their job. It has come to my attention, an individual has also, to all accounts, been joking around with Chris Albert, who is by all accounts, much to my disdain, a public official. This individual has served, has been served not one, but two warrants to search his motor vehicle for the same information only a week apart. So either they didn't get what they needed the first time, once again inept at their jobs, or this is harassment of a citizen, a fishing expedition at the call of Chris Albert. Neither warrant this reaction. You're looking at littering and distribution of propaganda. Both are mere fines. This was done at a citizen's business in front of their clients. Chris Albert is once again weaponizing the Canton Police Department for his own gain and to terrorize citizens who stand against him. Chris Albert, the proper procedure is three events. Then you go to Stoughton District Court, hope that you get a restraining order, call 911. Why are the rules so wildly different for you? Are you going after this individual for witness intimidation? Will I be next? Public service announcement and notice to all of our police in our town. After the attitude I received from Officer Healy the other morning when he ticketed me, I no longer feel safe being pulled over one-on-one in the town of Canton. Please let it be known that I will meet you outside of the police station. I will not risk being pulled over again by one of the good old boys. Officer Healy, your message was received. After speaking to multiple cops from surrounding towns and multiple ma, mass state police officers, they all agreed you are indeed just being a dick.
Hold on a minute.
Yes. Thank you for your bravery. Um, listen, Rita Lombardi, I live in Canton, obviously, and, you know, I came here tonight, I was gonna speak about the chief, and that was already spoken about. And when you, Mr. Lovegren, opened up with the, what you opened up with, um, and you said that the police, you know, we will not tolerate police being targeted. That's like, you know, the police are not being targeted. And that you, that statement was included. Everything you said is pretty much standard language. But when you add that the police, no one will, we're not gonna tolerate police being targeted, there's no incident of police being targeted. And when a statement like that is made, it causes confusion in an already confused and terrorized community. And so, you know, the police and, and employees everywhere, employees apply for their job. They say, I wanna work there. The people in the police department said, I wanna work there. When they said, I wanna work there, and they were given a contract, the contract is for them to follow policies and procedures and to demonstrate professional behavior. And when they don't, there's consequences. And what we have seen in this community and what we have seen through the testimony is that we have great policies and procedures, like we've heard. The problem we have in this community is we have selective adherence to those policies and procedures. And selective adherence is widespread. That has become clear in all the testimony. So if people start to say and criticize our police force, it's warranted. The testimony has come in right out of their mouths. They were paid to do a job. And the people that need protection are not the police with the guns. It's us in the community. I, too, do not feel safe in this town that I have lived in for 45 years. If something happens to me, I don't, I, I think that they'll just let me burn to the ground. I don't feel safe. None of us feel safe. The only ones who feel safe are the ones that are connected to those that have the power in this town. And we need to stop that. We need to come back together as a community. We need new leadership. The people that testified were high-ranking officials in the police department. It frightens me to think that their subordinates are looking at that behavior. I've been in leadership, you guys know that. You know, when employees go rogue and they're allowed to go rogue, the whole area, the whole department gets demoralized. And you lose the good people and the bad people stay. And the good people say, why should I do my job? Because look what they get. They don't do their job, and, and guess what? The town gets sued, $300,000. The agreement says the person's never gonna get promoted, and the person has been promoted multiple times. You know, so there's no consequences. We need protection. We are not feeling protected from this police department. We are not. And so we are asking for new leadership. And we do not want that contract renewed. And you will make the decision that you feel best, but we do not feel safe. And that is not feeling good to us. So I ask you, I, I appreciate you letting us speak. I appreciate not having the timer. You know, we wanna collaborate. We wanna work together, and we need a good foundation. We don't have it right now. So please, help us restore this town to what, the beautiful town that it is. Let's get the leadership in place that we need, and let's move forward. That's all I'm happy to say.
Thank you, Rita. Eric.
Eric, very good. And President, I'm here to talk about roads. Just to take it off topic. John, you said something at the town meeting that kind of bothered me. You said that Saddleback Road and so forth were getting piled by the town. There's a gentleman that lived, got up and spoke, and said he lives at Canton Point, and they pay for, to have the roads piled. That's a problem, I think. We live in a society, we're supposed to take care of everybody in the town. We have these 80-plus roads. Who knows what's going on with them? I live in a road that has a massive water problem in front of my yard. The telephone pole has been hit a couple of times. Stay tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Mr. Chair? Just, just as a reminder, we, Bill Walsh was here at our last meeting, and he went over the plan for, the paving plan and what streets are scheduled for exactly what, what months. Right. So I would encourage you to, to reach out to Bill.
I apologize. I wasn't playing. It's not encompassing the whole town.
No, be, because,
Again, that's the problem. You need to count.
You, you, you need the funds to do that, though. So, you know, every, all the Chapter 90 money, plus the money that the town puts aside, goes into the paving plan budget.
Take on more work, more neighborhoods, because they're $4 million homes. How about you take care of what you already told us you would take care of?
Thank you.
Cool.
We have time for one more speaker.
This is, yeah, this is, Yes.
Yeah.
Um, I was just wondering, I know you guys can't answer me, but is there a way we can wait for the case to come to fruition before you guys make your decision? I just wanted to say, um, I, I'm not happy with the chief, but I don't know, I don't know exactly what.
What we love, but also at what needs to be repaired. I love to being part of that process.
To three minutes per speaker. Those that wish to speak should stand at the microphone and wait to be recognized by the chair. Please state your name and what town you live in. You do not need to give your address. I would ask that all members of our audience be respectful of each speaker as well as each other. Anyone who does not wish to speak or who was unable to speak due to the time limit may submit their comments in writing for the board's review and consideration. With that being said, we will stop public comment at 7:04. And I will go over to my left.
Good evening, Susan Harrington, Canton citizen. Tonight's Select Board meeting is the last one before the election, as well as the release of the police audit report. I'm hopeful that the audit report will provide insights that will help our town heal. I am committed to being part of that process and finding ways to restore the public's trust, both in our town government and in our police department. I love this town, and I have deep roots in this community. I believe that in order to do better, we need to take a clear-eyed look at what we love, but also at what needs to be repaired. In recent, in the recent candidate forum, Mr. Connelly insinuated in his closing remarks that I was in favor of defunding the police when he said, now they want to defund the police, heaven help us. Let me be clear. At no time and in no setting have I ever said anything of the sort, and Mr. Connelly knows this. Further, I have never heard any Canton citizen express this opinion. The facts are that I support increasing the investment in our police department and ensuring that our ensuring that our officers have the leadership they deserve, as well as additional training and mental health resources. It's important for me to correct another statement. In last week's candidate forum at Orchard Cove, Mr. Connolly stated that in-person select board meetings were shut down last July because, quote, "Eight of 10 people who came to the meetings don't live in town, and a lot of them have been drinking." I, along with many other Canton residents, have attended select board meetings consistently for several years and know these statements to be false. Mr. Connolly, do the right thing and retract these false, incendiary, and divisive statements. We are all Canton residents who love our town. As a community, it's time to turn the page. It's time for new voices and new ideas to help get our town and government thinking proactively and back to focusing on what matters to Canton voters and families. Our schools, our seniors, quality of life, and healing the division within our community. Together, we can build Canton's best future.
Is that working?
Give it one more try. Yep.
Yep. Can you hear me? Brenda Sweeney, my humble opinion, the straight and narrow path. Webster's dictionary defines it as morally strict code of behavior or the proper, honest, and moral path of behavior. April 1st is the first day of jury selection for the second Karen Reed trial, a case that has changed this town forever, a trial that will make history. Its results will define this town for years to come. Some say it will set new precedent, rewrite the law journals. Some say the outcome will deliver justice. When all is said and done, this town needs to be on the right side of history, to find a path of redemption from the laughingstock we've become. How do we manage that is the question. The power to steer this town should be decided by the will of the people. The citizens of this town are depending on those few they elected to take us down that straight and narrow path. We would expect nothing less from the people we elected to do just that. Nothing less from the people we trusted to do just that. Nothing less from the people who took an oath to do just that. The will of the people should prevail in every decision made. We're at the mercy of this board for another week. After that, this board may look exactly the same, or it may look very different. But either way, we all need this board to take us down the straight and narrow path. Everything we do moving forward is critical. Let's be crystal clear. Regardless of their final report, we're not talking about a little bit of poor judgment and insufficient training that's easily remedied. The straight and narrow path is not inverted. It has no apparitions, and you won't find equipment or electronic disposal bins on that path either. None of the trail markers on that path say 323232, and all the cameras work properly. Nothing will obscure the view, and there's no detour to Middleborough. You'll certainly never stumble across a lost gunner badge on that path, just like evidence doesn't sit in the rust area for three years only to mysteriously pop up later. Some will try to dismiss the behaviors we've seen by saying, all we need is some retraining, but when there's no transparency, it's garbage in, garbage out. We all know they had a year to sit around the campfire and prepare, so please don't insult our intelligence. Your peacock feathers are a joke. This town's reputation is in tatters, and our police chief is a disgrace. Don't let her drag our decent officers down with her. Don't let Helena's legacy be the legacy of this board and therefore this town. Every decision moving forward will shape our future. This board will be remembered for that outcome. So, members of this board, what do you want the history books to say about you? I hope the history books smile down on Canton for the right thing, for making history for the right reasons. And when we look in the rearview mirror, we need to be able to hold our heads high because through all this turmoil, in the end, we did exactly that, the right thing. You own it on April 8th, citizens. Make it happen. It's your future.
Jennifer O'Donnell, Canton, Mass. I would like to know how much money did the Canton 9 investigation cost the town of Canton? How much money did the Duck Gate investigation and the prosecution cost the town of Canton? How much will it still cost Canton? Lanker, you were overheard during that investigation in Honeydew, saying it was a huge waste of resources and time. I have to say I couldn't agree more. Whatever came of the code of conduct policy that you are updating, what ramifications are there for breaking the code of conduct and repeatedly breaking it? The chief of police's contract is about to end. I've heard that you are in negotiations to renew it. If this is true, have you posted the position externally to interview other potential candidates? Is the position open to other candidates other than the chief currently? Why didn't the board or the chief of police make a public statement to address the FBI arrest of a 23-year-old man for trafficking a 15-year-old girl out of the town of Canton? Why was no public comment to address the Canton man arrested by the FBI for international ties of money laundering and distributing of drugs of over $24 million? And isn't it embarrassing that today, a pedestrian accident reported by the Canton Police Department had to turn off comments because they knew the embarrassment that would have followed if they left it on? That's all. I'll email these and give you your 10 days to reply.
Rocco Camerata, Canton. I'm not sticking up for John or anyone on the board, but for him to have to retract something, I didn't see what he said about the drinking and all that, but I will say, last week before the meeting, there was a group of people that were in the meeting drinking shots of vodka outside. So I don't know what he said, but I'm just letting you guys know.
Just letting you know, Rocco, and I think Rocco knows now that they weren't drinking shots of vodka, those are shots of ginger. They were health drinks. It's funny, because when I was in Canton one day, Rocco drove by in his truck, and we were doing the shots. They were non-alcoholic. Ginger, ginger, ginger shot, health shots. Rocco, 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 Rocco. He is so funny.
Thank you.
One of the McAlberts over there.
This is such a fun trip down memory lane here. We're not even touching on so many moments here.
Rita Lombardi, look, there's an election April 8th. We have appeared before the select board, myself, for over 18 months, looking for change. And every single week, we don't get that change. We're not even listened to. We just came out of 10 months from the Zoom closet. You know, John, we heard you at the forum, I believe it was the forum, or the select board meeting, whatever, you said that police oversight wasn't the responsibility of the select.
Those ginger shots are worse than vodka. Like, they are bad. Oh. I had a couple, and it was just like, wow.
Select board. Then you said it was Charlie's responsibility. Poor Charlie, I don't know how it felt to be under that bus. But then it was Charlie's responsibility after, you know, the board had told us 18 months ago that you had allowed this responsibility to be the chief's, and she could self-manage. And then afterwards, you said, you kind of alluded that it was your responsibility. The oversight of the police is the select board's responsibility, and we have not seen that done well at all. As a matter of fact, it's been poorly done, and we have evidence tape, surveillance from the Canton Police Department that is edited, inverted, and turned over in a murder trial as if it is exemplary kind of evidence. It's time for change. It's time for Canton to get out of where we are stuck and move forward by electing Susan Harrington as the next select board member. We need someone who can get us out of this, and John, for two years, you haven't done it. So I don't know what's gonna change because it hasn't happened yet. I know that people in the town love you, John. You've been here for a long time, and you've helped a lot of people, and people appreciate that, and I appreciate that, too. It's just time for a change and time to bring us forward. And the first time I came to a select board meeting, I came because I was concerned about what was going on in the town, and I had heard things. The first time I came, I came to the mic and I spoke. I was the last person to speak, and when I walked away, you were caught on a hot mic referring to me as an effing random citizen. And now I hope that this is the last select board meeting, that we see you and that you have that opportunity to do that. I wish you well. I thank you for everything that you've done for this town, and now I think it's time for the town of Canton to turn the page, come together, move forward, and let's make this town what it can be.
We're gonna redirect you to tonight's select board meeting, new stream. Check it out.